If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Yes. Sure. Would you like to get up?
Go, go, go.
Don't say a word. Mary Ann Fischel of 14 North Fairlane in Mawa. I'm also the president of the Indian Field Homeowners Association. And I'm just speaking to number nine, proposal of the cell tower. And I just would like to encourage you to please pass whatever resolution you make to give the town the property so that we can.
If I may jump in?
You could jump.
Wonderful.
And you jumped.
That's all I can.
I bet you can.
And I am. You're referring to a resolution, it's actually just a presentation?
Yes.
There is no vote up the board this evening in regard to the cell phone towers. For information purposes only, that has been shared with the facility staff first, as a small group, and now the board as a whole. So we are just sitting tight and in an information gathering state.
Okay, Chris, I know the town is waiting for your...
The town is aware of where we're at at this point and the fact that we've not referred us...
So that means September's meeting?
No, that just means right now we're at an information point. Honestly, there's nothing that's set in stone yet unless I'm speaking wrong. Mike?
Today, we're going to have a public presentation from a cellphone provider. And if there's a consensus among the board, we will take further action in September.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much.
Evelyn Slakow, 43, Thunderhead Place.
Welcome back.
Ah, yes. Okay, two questions. So 15-0 courses of study. So New Jersey student learning standards is basically Common Core washed up then spit back out. So if you could just...
Well, what she said, Dr. Morty, was washed up and spit back out.
Okay.
All right. All right, I'm just...
Could you just tell us what, if any, like, real changes would be for us?
I'm gonna turn you around a little bit and I'm gonna have Ms. Zimmerman take this over.
Oh, sure. Do you want me to give the instructional report now? I can jump in because that's part of the instructional...
Does it answer Ms. Slakow's question?
Yes.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I'll come and join you if I may.
Okay, join me.
Okay. First, I want to thank, because there was a lot of curriculum work on this spring and summer, all of the teachers and supervisors and principals who worked on it. All curricula have been updated to ensure that they're matching and meeting all current state requirements and reflect the New Jersey student learning standards. Formerly, they were the Common Core state standards in math and language arts. There have been some switches in grade levels in language arts and math, some language added, things like that. Next-gen science standards, next-generation science standards have been renamed, New Jersey Student Learning Standards in Science. Basically, it's the same thing, and all the other standards have been renamed, New Jersey Student Learning Standards.
Okay, is the history, like, coming soon and gonna be changed to the C, you know, the different designations?
Not that the state has told us.
Not that the state...
But we have an eye on it.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's better than spit back out?
Well, we have a lot of educational jargon, that's not it. But I get you, I get you. Can I...
Well, absolutely.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna wait.
I just...
I've never had to figure out this at the mic stand.
I'll come back and tell you more later, I'll let you finish, how about that?
We're changing things, this is the new...
Yes. For central standards, you have to be flexible with it, right?
Yeah, with the flow, right?
Evelyn, continue with your question.
15cc, other capital projects. Could you just extend on what the work is being done in the digital media lab of that project?
That's a great question. I'm gonna elaborate a little bit more than I did with Ms. Silverman, the commentary that we have for those board members that saw that email. But basically, what we're doing is we're building a wall to separate that environment for the digital media lab. So all of our broadcasting-type classes and digital media classes will be done within a confined space. We're defining it more so than it just having a temporary wall that divides it. We're giving it more meaning, as we've spent so much time with the curriculum, we wanted to designate it space for media courses. So that's what we're up to within the confines of the media center.
Because right now, it's taught and it sometimes competes with what's going on.
It conflicts with what's going on.
All those stuff go on, yeah.
So that's what we're up to. It's actually gonna be a really neat thing for the kids to be able to enjoy.
It's gonna be the Donald Trump Digital Media Lab. Building a wall.
Building a wall.
Building a wall.
Okay, so...
And we're gonna pay...
But we're not gonna make it to the end, right? We're gonna make Ramsey.
I'm just gonna... Just don't listen to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? See if you want to call. Okay, thank you. Dr. Shum?
Real quick, we're just days away from opening day for our staff. We've spent the last two or three days, three days actually, Dennis and Christine and Lisa Rizzo have spent time with over 42 of the faculty members that we will be welcoming on Monday for opening day. And it's been a real comprehensive training session for all of them. They are excited, they are nervous, they can't wait to begin. And for those that have taught in other districts, I think they're real appreciative of being here with us. I think first impressions mean a lot, and I hope that we've made a good one. So Monday morning, actually Tuesday morning, thank you, Mike, we are good to go. We have a lot of real good stuff happening. We are fortunate enough, there are 600 districts in the state of New Jersey, and we have invited the Commissioner of Education for New Jersey to be our keynote with our staff this year. And I think that's pretty exciting, because there are a lot of places that she can be that morning. She lives pretty far away, so she is leaving at the crack of dawn to be here early so that she can walk in with the administrators and the teachers and be here for us and support us, and I think that that's a real great thing. Our facilities are looking amazing, so our teachers and students are coming back to real clean facilities, so a big shout-out to our facility staff. Technology-wise, we have integrated a lot more computers, even down to 4.5 this year, they've been imaged and ready to go, and our teachers have received them as well. So a big shout-out to our technology staff as well, it takes a lot. So we have a real good team. Other than that, we're set and ready and can't wait to begin, because right now, they really are just buildings and they become schools the morning of September 7th. So it's gonna be wonderful, we look forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There is one presentation this evening. Before we get to that, I do just have one update regarding the audit. At our last meeting, the audit had not yet begun, now it has, all the field work for the audit has been completed. As a reminder, we do have a new audit firm this year, the Sabatia Accountants and Advisors. We expect to have a full report back from them in November for the board to act on present, and we'll have an opportunity for them to speak to the Finance Committee before that time as well. That's the only update from me this evening. As I said before, there is gonna be a presentation tonight. We have a couple representatives from Verizon here this evening. Tony, I apologize for the last name mispronunciation, Igidio, and Francis Bosholdi from Verizon as well. We're gonna be doing a presentation, informational presentation regarding the potential cell tower on Board of Ed. And Tony, I turn it over to you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Wait, oh, you have these.
Thank you. Okay.
I don't know if that's on, Tony, if you want to hit the switch, maybe up on top there's a...
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
We don't like that guy. I got the trade.
You can lower that thing too, or else it'll step so low.
I don't know. Yeah. Tap it.
No, don't ever tap it.
Never blow into it.
Don't ever tap it. Why don't you tap it? It's just a brush, the diaper's on. The diaper's...
I should tap it. And it just looks...
All right, my name's Tony Igidio, I work for Verizon Wireless, I've been in the industry for 10 years. We are here to propose, in Board of Ed, to raise a bid to allow cellphone carriers to build a tower.
Sorry, Tony.
So we've come up with a good location that we believe works for everyone, off of Armont Avenue, Turner Park 3. You see a map, and this green part of the map is all wetlands. And Verizon is suggesting that Mawa release a RFP to put a tower above this wetland here.
You have that on the bigger boards?
Yeah. At least they can see. I don't have his presentation, but we still have to pinpoint whether the proposal is he's speaking about.
Again, the next page here, you see that we'll be able to do a road crossing at the shortest possible area to get over the wetlands. And that will allow for a cell tower in that area. Now, this standard cell tower looks a little something like this here, it's ugly, but does the job. This particular one has four characters, it's called a monopole. On your next page, you'll see a lattice tower, it's a thicker version of a monopole. And what we are suggesting is on the next page, a tree pole, which looks like a tree. Now, this standing alone looks kind of dumb, but in the woods like this, we think it'll blend in pretty well, especially compared to the silver monopoles that are normally had.
The pole that's being proposed is gonna be 180 feet tall.
Francis here is going to show why we need this tower, and why some other carriers need a tower, and how it'll work.
Good evening. So basically, Verizon Wireless has a significant gap, and that's primarily due to the fact that most of Verizon's existing facilities are in the commercial areas along Route 17 and Franklin Turnpike. The area to the east is mainly residential, and also the terrain. So you have, and you can see it from coming down Route 17 south, you'll see that the high rise, the ridge, that's there, that pretty much blocks the signal from the existing facilities that Verizon Wireless currently has. So if you turn to the next page, you'll see the existing propagation maps. And as you can see, you have Verizon's located on the Sheraton to the northeast, northwest of the map. The next facility is along Franklin Turnpike, which is called West Mawa Small Cell. And then to the south of that, we have, we're located on the lattice tower, the red and white lattice tower, as you can see from Route 17 along Route 17. And as I mentioned before, Verizon Wireless on the Sheraton Hotel and the lattice tower, they are already over 100 feet, and as you can see, it does not provide reliable service to the area to the east.
So just to clarify, the area that is not shaded in green, the area that's shaded in green is where there is service?
In green is where there is.
Anything that's not shaded in green, they're here on this area. So anything that's shaded in yellow...
They're proposing.
Correct. Everything shaded in yellow is no service, no reliable service.
Correct. The difference between the area in white and the area in yellow, I just illustrated the Mawa Township border, so you can see that the north section is where, in white, is where Rockland County begins.
So the green here, it's all broken up, is that, is that the pole-mounted units that you're using that, as you have a locker down there?
The scattered green that you see on the map, is this what you're referring to? It's really because of the high ridge. It does capture a little bit of the high point of the ridge, the signal strength. But again, because of the hilly terrain, the Sheraton is on a high elevation, and then the terrain dips down, so the signal actually sees over the valley, doesn't quite cover into the valley, and then it just skims the top of the next ridge over. So on the next page, I've demonstrated what the coverage would look like at the proposed location. Thank you. This is at an antenna center line of 180 feet. Now, as you can see, you're probably wondering, why does it look so weird? And it looks that shape primarily due to the terrain. So you have a ridge on the west and a ridge on the east, and the signal's being blocked and contained. It'll see to the top of the ridge, but it's not gonna see over that. Now, I did run a few propagation analysis, and there really isn't a significant difference between the 150 and the 180 feet. So the idea is that it's not just a Verizon coverage gap problem, but other wireless carriers as well. So if this proposed monopole was to be built, it would allow for co-locations, and basically, every carrier would have an equivalent, so to speak, coverage in this area.
How will you address the dead area still there?
Yes, that's a good question. So to that particular area, that's between the West Mawa Small Cell and where the proposed coverage indicated in a purple, it's supposed to be blue, but it comes out purple, is mainly residential, and we're struggling with that. So that is still a part of Verizon's plan.
We live in that area, and we get service. I live right on top of the ridge, and in front of my house, I have service, and then the back, I have no service. So there is service in that tan area.
This area?
Yeah, there's service in this area.
Well, that's in the green scattered area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
We'll have a catch-up presentation. Thank you.
No, sorry, I just wanted to clarify that there is service there.
And my house, two houses down, I don't get service, so...
So that's why we use the term reliable, and what we are referring to as reliable is where you're able to use your cellphone indoors as well. So it's not just street coverage, it's not just in your car, but it's where you work, where you live, where you primarily function.
So in order to get this coverage here, you'd have to put a cell tower in a residential area.
Yeah, this particular proposed project would not...
Would not cover that.
It would require a separate facility.
So the goal is to place something there, place something in the proposed location, and then we'll have an idea of what it'll cover and what it won't. Now, the map that Francis did is, it's all in theory, right? So once you put it up, you can tilt antennas, you can do some things. What she proposed has a sector pointing up to New York, which we could possibly move into that section of Mawa, you know, there's things we can do, but until we actually build this monopole, we don't know.
That's not guaranteed.
That's not guaranteed, but as I mentioned before, you do have high hills and valleys that makes it very challenging.
It's guaranteed to be better than what it is.
Absolutely, yes.
Once that's up, are there nodes or other things that can go up auxiliary to enhance, that can somehow feed off of a tower to enhance lower geographic areas, or is there anything like that?
It wouldn't feed off of the existing coverage. There are possible solutions that are standalone, though, that would provide their own small coverage footprint.
How many has it?
But there are drawbacks to that. So the number of poles that are available is limited, the space on the poles are limited. We're already finding that in areas where that is being evaluated, you're looking at new wood poles, which the majority of people don't want either, and you're below the tree line. So the fact that you're below the tree line, you don't cover very far, you're really covering the roads and not necessarily the residential houses.
That's for the first...
So it is limited.
All right, that's your model.
Do you have an estimate of how many households that this would affect, or this would provide, you know, coverage for, that don't have it?
No, I have not done a thorough investigation to see what the demographics is in this coverage footprint, not this time.
And but some of these issues you were referencing are the technical issues, which would be faced by any provider, whether it's Verizon, or AT&amp;T, or T-Mobile, or whoever, right?
Correct.
This is just the technology.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Fair, if you have a report for us this evening?
I'm just to echo with Dr. Shum, sharing with everyone. We're really excited about new hire orientation. We have 38 new people starting with us, and it's been a wonderful experience the last three days. Tomorrow, we have our Mawa Bus Tour, which will be very exciting, so good group. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Myers for this evening. I had the pleasure too to greet the new teachers this past week who've joined our district, and it's really amazing to see the high caliber of talented teachers that Mawa attracts. So we are grateful they've chosen to become a part of our district, and we want to congratulate them and wish them luck. We also want to welcome back our teachers and power professionals and wish them well, as well as our students, as they start this exciting new school year. And of course, our good luck wishes go out to our parents and the guardians, we'd like to thank you for your continued support. And then some really great news is that we have, building number five has been fixed up, renovated. There's new JV and Varsity lockers, and they've installed floors, they've sanded them, and they've reseal them, so building five is...
It's worthy of a...
It's fantastic. Yeah. So board committee reports, do you have any board committee reports this evening? Christine?
Yes. Thank you. Hello again. Okay, so as I said, lots of work being done on curriculum over the spring and summer, lots of minor updates, but the major updates were made to the following courses. Users were added to the preschool creative curriculum, elementary music, elementary math. Elementary math is interesting, we had the Everyday Math Consortium, are the districts who also use everyday math, and a group of districts worked alongside Mawa in creating and updating that curriculum, so that was exciting work. Second time we've done that, also led by Denise Varicchio, who is a Mawa teacher, and the head of the Everyday Math Consortium, so it was for Mawa on that. Algebra II, Advanced Placement Calculus A, B, and B, C, Computer Programming and Design, Mobile App Design, Humanoid Robotics, Steam Design and Research, Honors Team Capstone, Independent Research and Internship, Advanced Placement English Language and Composition, and Advanced Placement English Literature and Composition, Play Production, Advanced Play Production, English in Grades 6 through 12, Transition Planning, The Big History Project, I'm sorry, that's in the course. Honor Studio Portfolio Development and ESL. New courses are The Big History Project, Elementary Spanish, Broadcast Journalism, Technology and Engineering Principles, Advanced Placement Chinese Language and Culture, and Mindfulness, Resilience, and Wellness. So really cool, exciting stuff going on in the world of curriculum. We have some book pilots and social studies. Ms. Van Ness told us about Sadako and the Thousand Paper Cranes, which will be piloted at the 7th grade World Geography class. It's a true story of a child who died as a result of the US bombing of Hiroshima, and the focus of that book is on her spirit. In AP Government and Politics and Honors Constitutional Law, they'll be reading Wait What and Life's Other Essential Questions. It's a book from a famous commencement speech that's evidently making rounds in the TED Talk world as well. From the Harvard University of Boston? Yes. And... Yes. I appreciate that. And 8th grade US history, Battle Lines, A Graphic History of the Civil War. And what's interesting about that is student interest in graphic novels is high, especially for boys. The combination of art and text makes the subject matter especially compelling. So that's the curricular updates. We also have on the agenda for you tonight, the DIAC and the Skip committees for this coming school year. DIAC stands for District Evaluation Advisory Committee. It's a committee that's composed of Skip members from every school. The Skips are the school improvement panel. So the Skips talk about things at the school level, and Skip representatives come together at the DIAC table to talk about things from a district perspective, and they share what's going on at the schools. So wonderful committees all, and we're glad to have fine people working on them once again this year.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, thanks.
For any other committee or courses this evening? Yes, Mr. Keith?
Policy, had a committee meeting on August 3rd. We're gonna take a look at the inventory of our policies, pick out some of the older ones that needs updating. This will be, that process is gonna be ongoing.
Thank you very much. I just have a report on the Mawa Access. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
I just want to sort of wrap up the presentation on the cellphone. So the next steps in the cellphone process, if there's a consensus among the board to pursue this opportunity to put a tower on our property, would be for us to ask Kyle to put an RFP resolution on an agenda. We would go out to the marketplace, and we would ask bidders of cellphone towers and service providers to give us a bid for building a tower on the property. We would then vote on engaging in a contract, and we would receive lease payments, virtually per captivity, for use of the property. So I'm just curious if there are any questions about the Verizon Tower, if anybody has any objections to asking Kyle to put this on a future agenda?
What numbers have been kicked around as far as coming to us with this tower, whatever case?
In terms of financial numbers?
What's coming to us?
I don't want to really comment on that, because we only have the one perspective of one company, so I think...
It would be...
It's more than zero.
It would be a bid process, so I mean, it depends on who the high bidder is and what value they see in that. But you know, the conversation we had inside was interesting in that the way these things are typically structured, you would have a lease from whoever actually constructs the tower, and then a land lease for the people, the tenants that are on the tower. So there are a lot of different moving parts, but at the end of the day, it's a bid process, and it would be subject to high bidders.
It's a nice income stream, but it doesn't tilt the balance.
Right.
So is there any objection to pursuing an RFP?
No, no objection? Do you need a motion?
No, no motion needed, because we'll have it on the next available agenda, once we have the RFP put together, there'll be a motion to pursue, and we'll go forward with the RFP.
Thank you.
And I think we should probably notify the town, Steve, right, that what the status is?
I will let them know at the next council meeting where the direction you guys are heading into.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Any other work, please?
I have a report on Access for All. Mawa Access for All had a meeting on August 23rd, in which they discussed creating a community survey to gain insight into the challenges and request suggestions from those with disabilities, and to learn how the town can better accommodate those individuals. They also discussed a few upcoming events, they're looking forward to this fall, an open house, a Veterans Day salute, a movie night, and a basketball game for those with disabilities that will more than likely take place in one of our schools. And as soon as I get more updates on planning those events, I will let the board know.
Just one more thing?
Yes.
Before we go to a vote, there is a great deal of curriculum, and I know that Christine spoke to it, and I know Evelyn, you asked about it, but we wouldn't be where we were at with pages of curriculum if not for the hours and hours and hours of work of Christine, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, and our supervisors, and our principals, and our teachers. A lot of people had hands, and what it is, is the foundation of what it is that we do, and it's super important, but to bring it to you this evening took a great deal of work. So I wanted to say that.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And a very broad-based effort among all our talented staff and people. It's not as though we're just buying a package and saying, well, this is what we're shoving down our case.
Putting our hands on top of it.
Our staff is extremely talented, dedicated, and have engaged in this process top to bottom, and they did a remarkable job.
Exactly, yes, agreed. Thank you. Do you have any board member remarks, additional comments on reports?
Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on reports or other non-agenda items? Nothing? Okay, I, oh, I have, oh, digitally distracted. We had a presentation on digital distraction that was given by Tom Kirsting, a licensed professional counselor and author of his connected at Joyce Kilmer earlier this year. And he gave tips on helping children spend more time in the real world than less in the cyber world. So Valley Hospital is going to be hosting that same presentation on Tuesday, October 3rd, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. at the Mawa Public Library. So you can register for this event by going to their website, valleyhealth.com, look under upcoming events, and click view the calendar. I attended the meeting. Christine, you were there, were you there as well?
At that one, no.
That one, no. It's very, very informative. Tom Kirsting has written a book, Disconnected, which I highly recommend for parents to read. And if you could make it, please do attend. That's all that I have this evening. So now I have all business. I have a motion to, oh, Ms. Wenderkowitz, and Leslie Conco, this is Conco's side.
Okay, for all business minutes, Mr. Gallo.
Yes, to all except for 14C, the August 16th.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Ms. Mavertich.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
I abstain on A, B, and C.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes, on A and C, abstain on B.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes.
We have new business, other. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Wenderkowitz, seconded by Mr. Gallo. Any comments? 15A through YY. Okay, just wanted to make a comment that the board bed goals are on this agenda, it's standard 15MB, I think? It's now XX. XX, 15XX. And the second goal listed deals with developing and maintaining various methods of communication to inform, support, engage the Mawa community. So on that note, I'd like to ask community members that are in the audience now, if they'd like to share any suggestions with us, please do so at our meetings, or you can contact me via email or cellphone. Actually, my home phone number's in the directory. Give me a call, give me a shout-out, or talk to any of the board members, and we appreciate you reaching out to us. Let us know how you feel, any suggestions or comments. Thank you very much. Okay, if you take the call.
We'll call on 15A to YY. Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
I guess I'll abstain on check 87577.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Ms. Mavertich.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes, but I'm abstaining from 15G.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Ms. Barron.
Yes.
Okay, next, I'd like to take 16A through P. Ms. Wenderkowitz, questions on the second act? Dr. Morthee, any comments? I have those items.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
Ms. Mavertich.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
No, I'm 16J, yes, on everything else.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes.
Okay, public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Thank you very much. I have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Dr. Morthee. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.